Thank you for joining us, and this is our January 15th, 2025 work session of the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners. This is, of course, also our first work session in the new commission room, and I'll keep saying that for a while. For our work sessions, we do not take public comment during this time. We also take no votes and no actions. This is a chance for us to ask questions and learn. We do, of course, always take public comment at our business meeting, which will follow this meeting at 5:30. Today's topic is the Kansas Open Meetings Act and Open Records Act, and we are inviting John Bullock also to the table. But I think, Sarah, are you planning to kick us off?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of give some context that we wanted to have this work session early on with the new five-member commission largely to just provide somewhat of an overview on the Open Meetings Act and the Open Records Act, but really to allow you all some time to talk about what is different now that you, for those that you were up here that were hearing it was three, and now that we're five. So I know John's prepared to answer some of those questions. So, John, I'll just turn it over to you.
Thank you, Sarah. John Bullock, County Counselor. Appreciate the opportunity to meet with you today, Commissioners, and I know that you've all had some conversations about open meetings and open records either over the years or in the last few months, depending on your timing. And the purpose of today's presentation and conversation, as Sarah alluded, is to just review some of the principles that are most interesting to you. You know, and I've prepared some pretty exhaustive materials, which I do not intend to read to you today. That's one of my pet peeves, is people who read PowerPoint slides, and I don't intend to do that. But I am also happy to walk through the presentation if that's helpful and/or immediately begin to address your questions and concerns. This is your work session, not mine, so guide me as far as what it is that you'd like to know and the conversations that you'd like to have. If I know the answer, I'll tell you, and if I don't, I'll get it for you. I don't pretend to be an encyclopedia of all the law, so I will do my best. I've been working with Douglas County now for about 15 years, and I've seen quite a few open records and open meetings acts issues arise. I can assure you that in the entire time that I've been working with the county, I've never once been asked, "How do we get away with violating the law?" You know, everyone's intent, from the commission to the staff and everyone else, has been to comply, and really, the questions that I get asked are, you know, "How do we comply? How do we make sure that we're providing open access to what we're doing when we're doing the public's business?" And there are certainly times when we can't provide certain information, or we can't provide the public access to our meetings, either by law or by our discretionary right to keep those matters confidential. But generally speaking, you know, you're doing the public's business, and the public has a right to know, and we try to fulfill that every way we can. And so with that introduction, I'm happy to begin with PowerPoint and just walk through, or if there are questions right out of the gate, we can start there. Anyone want to?
John, Jean Dorsey. Last Sunday, well, we weren't sworn in yet, so we weren't commissioners, but three of us attended a meeting, and I'm pretty confident none of us knew the other two were going to be there. Is that permissible?
Yes, it is, and there are lots of different ways that commissioners might encounter each other at public events or locations, attending, for example, a ribbon cutting, or if you happen to bump into each other at the county fair, or at the farm tour, or something like that, that's absolutely permissible. And, in fact, expect it, that many of you would be in the same place at the same time. The issue is if you start to talk about official business, when there's enough of you participating, that it creates a meeting, and in that process then creates a meeting that is required to be open. But merely, you know, let's say you went to a Kansas League of Municipalities conference, all five of you could attend, you could sit together, you could talk about the Lawrence High football game, you know. The risk that you run, it's not really a risk legally, it's more about optics, is that if the three of you are sitting at Dairy Queen having ice cream, someone may suspect that you're talking about official business. And so, in fact, the Attorney General's Office says that's the most frequent question they get. You know, "I saw a majority of this body at Dairy Queen," or wherever, "and, you know, is that okay?" And the answer is yes, it's okay, provided that you're avoiding the characteristics that create a meeting. And the materials do have some more nuances about what that is, but just with the general information you gave me, it doesn't sound like there's any reason to be concerned. You know, I just...
And usually, our practice would be to kind of keep things on each other's radar, keep it on the staff radar of when we think we might be attending something that possibly another commissioner would be at, and we just notice those in the minutes, and then it's not an issue. We still are not talking about business with each other, but at least just that managing those optics that several of us might be there, that's kind of how we've managed that in the past. I think we've painted it pretty broadly, as far as we really have no contact with each other at all as three outside of these meetings, and I think that's what will be different, is managing, like, what does that look like when we can have conversations? Will we? And what's our comfort level? And our comfort levels may be different as we kind of figure things out as we go forward.
Well, let's start, thank you, Commissioner. Let's start walking through some of the slides, and I, again, I don't intend to read them to you, but I may pause and make a few comments as we go. The first slide just outlines the public policy. This body is subject to this, these Open Meeting Act rules, and as I mentioned, it's always been our intent to comply with the law, which is in favor of doing the public's business in public. When does KOMA apply? Next slide, Sarah, is when the body is a covered entity. That's you. There's a meeting. That's a pretty straightforward principle. The next slide, what is a meeting? And this is where it's a little different now, because a majority of your body used to be two, which meant that none of you could talk to each other about anything that would be constituting official business. Now that's three, which means that two of you can discuss matters that may be coming before the commission, and that is appropriate. But a meeting, and just till we define what a meeting is, it's a gathering of a majority, an interactive communication and discussion of the business or affairs of the body. So interactive communication is, to some extent, what I was speaking with Commissioner Dorsey about, which is, are you talking to each other about official business? Just being in the same space together would not be a violation, and some of the sub-bullet points on this slide allude to that. So the next slide talks about examples of a meeting, and this is something that's become more ubiquitous in our technology-driven world, is, you know, when you're texting, it's not just the phone anymore, it's, are you commenting on a social media site? And if Commissioner A comments, and Commissioner B comments, and then Commissioner C comments, well, could someone say you've now had a meeting because you're all interacting in some way? You know, texts, emails, that sort of thing. And I've never observed any of our commissioners do this, but if you're leaving the meeting and you're on your way out to your car, and three of you stand and talk about the matter that you just heard about in the meeting, that's inadvertent, probably, but it would be something to be really sensitive to. And as I mentioned, the next slide, electronic communications. And the nuance here would be, let's say a member of the public emails all five of you and sends you some information about a matter that's pending before the board. That doesn't create a meeting. You're just the passive recipient of that. If Commissioner Willie got an email and forwarded it to the other board members, that would not be an interactive communication, but it does create a risk that someone might reply, or that it might lead to an interactive communication. So it's not a violation, per se, if Commissioner Willie wanted to say, "I received this communication from the organization in favor of X or the organization against Y." But again, it's where the caution comes into play. That may then lead to a violation. And certainly, staff members can email all of the commission members. You know, you'll see, when I email you, I often put at the top, "Do not reply all." And that's one of the great dangers, is you just, you know, reply all, "Thanks," and I'd also like to know X, Y, and Z. Okay, whoops, now we're kind of inadvertently getting into a potential question about a meeting. So I do say, please, at all times, avoid reply all. Next slide, what is a discussion? Again, these are maybe somewhat obvious, but again, when you're communicating with each other about business that could come before the body, you know, it's not, "Did you see the Chiefs game on Saturday?" But, and it could be at any stage in the process, so it could be months before the matter is going to come before you. But if you're talking about it, then you're having an interactive discussion. And it's not necessary that this communication that you're having lead to a binding action. It's not like, hey, you know, Commissioner Kelly, how are you going to vote? And I've just talked to Commissioner Reed, and she's voting this way. I mean, it's not, that's not necessary that it get to that level. It would just be, you know, hey, this, you know, conditional use permit's coming up, what do you think? You know, that would be discussing the business of the body, and that is a discussion for purposes of the Open Meetings Act. This next slide, entitled Serial Meetings. I'm going to spend, did you have a question?
Yeah, I do have a question. I think I know the answer, but instead of just assuming that, I want to verify. Rewind a little bit to talking about that reply all. Now, I know where I work and have worked in the past, and many other people have the experience of sometimes there are policies even within businesses or companies, or at least practices of not reply, or of blind copying individuals in order to avoid reply all. My understanding from discussions in years past related to KOMA and CORA is that it is important for specifically correspondents, for example, from staff to all commissioners, not be blind copied, for example, and it be transparent who all of the recipients are, right? Am I accurate in that? I just kind of want to clarify, just because it was a recent discussion amongst coworkers and myself, aside from the county, related to the sort of practice over the risk of the reply all, and what are some of the implications of that related to confidentiality in certain settings. So different rules apply, but I just wanted to hear your feedback about that related specifically to this type of correspondence that we're discussing, and if there's any specific guidance or feedback from the AG's office related to that practice.
Yeah, and I'm not aware of any legal provisions or interpretations that discuss blind copying in particular. So what I would default to is just what is the substance of the interaction? You know, are, is a majority of the Board of County Commissioners engaging in interactive discussion about a matter that could or is coming before the board? And whether that's by blind copy, or a snap, a tweet, a text, you name it. And I don't think that the AG or the courts would be caught up in blind copy, you know, blind copy versus direct copy. It's just, are you interacting? And the purpose of getting away from physical meetings in the same space into this more, you know, cyberspace kind of environment is to say, you know, we're not going to get hung up on the format or the means or methods of the communication, we're just going to look at what's actually going on. So I think that if the practice of blind copying someone leads to an interactive discussion, inadvertently or otherwise, then you've stepped into a meeting problem. Did I answer your question?
Absolutely, and I mean, that confirms sort of what my thought process was, and I appreciate you articulating the difference of, I mean, what matters is, or what might be in question is the content of, and whether or not there's interactive communication, regardless of the format and how. And the fact that even if, you know, even if and when correspondence is sent in that way, it is still recorded and available through any processes of requesting an open record, for example, right? And that all of that stuff is still visible. So I just was curious if there had been any explicit discussion around that. Thank you.
Yes, and I may have omitted the open record piece of your comment, but the, if we were responding to an Open Records Act request, and we were searching for responsive information, it wouldn't be material for my purposes, whether it was a CC, a BC, a to, a from, an appendix, an attachment, you know, a snap, a tweet, a video. I mean, it's really, if it meets the definition of public record, and it's responsive to the request, and no exception applies, then it's disclosed, unless there's, as you say, an exception that would allow us or require us to withhold it.
John, I have a question about the content of the discussion, and it's specifically around scheduling. So it's not uncommon for us to get a request for, let's say, a commissioner to be on, to take an interview. If we communicate with each other saying, "I'm available," does that count as business of the commission that would? Or is that communication that we can have as a body?
Based on the parameters of that hypothetical, which there may be additional nuances or details that would come out in a particular situation, discussing scheduling would not implicate the Open Meetings Act in the way, because you're not discussing official business that's going to come before the body. So if you were saying, you know, "When can we meet to get our support together to pass this resolution?" That would be, I mean, that's not your example, obviously. I'm making up a kind of a silly example, but just, you know, "Can you meet on Friday at 4:00?" Yes, I can. That kind of thing would not implicate the Open Meetings Act as an interactive communication. It might be an open record, you know, that you've had that exchange, but it wouldn't necessarily implicate the Open Meetings Act if that's all it was.
Is that because it's just two commissioners at that point? But if all five were copied, and I said, "Hey, can you meet Wednesday at 3:00 for this, for this budget meeting," and they all start replying, that's okay, but it's about, I mean, this is where it really feels weird, because eventually, it's going to become a county meeting.
Yeah, and if you look, great question. The third bullet point of my slide must be intended by any or all participants to reach an agreement on a matter that requires binding action by the commission. You know, it's really, again, you could say, well, when we're going to meet, could the, you know, the point is, is that if it's just, yes, we can all meet at that time, that's not a matter that requires a binding. It's not approval of a conditional use permit, it's not adoption of a resolution, it's not, you know, amendment to the code. So I wouldn't be concerned about that. At the same time, you know, why take a chance? I mean, the more cautious approach would be for each person to respond individually and allow staff to coordinate your calendars and arrange that. If you get in the habit of not replying all, that seems like a safer course of action, although if someone came and said, "Did that violate the Open Meetings Act?", I certainly, I wouldn't say that it did. Does that address your question?
Yeah, and I think you're speaking to that piece that, for those of us that have been here with three commissioners for a long period of time, this all feels very weird, because, you know, there's no communication between multiple commissioners until, like, now we could do that. So it may be one of those things that, you know, what are our norms and practices that we want to continue to do? And I am more comfortable sort of interacting, you know, one-on-one, but it's nice to know that we have a little bit of room in case those conversations happen. But I don't anticipate sending you emails for all five of you, asking for you to reply all with your calendars. I would rather know individually, and then let staff work on that piece and come back to you with a date, but that's stuff we should talk about.
So I recognize that some things may be allowed, but I just, I like having cautious habits and just sticking with those habits, and maybe that's because that's the way we've been doing this for a while. So I would see still wanting to, even scheduling and things like that, to go through staff just for, just clarity, I think, for everything else. And maybe that's too strict, but that's kind of where, as I've been looking at, what's my comfort level? And I think it's probably something that we should check back in with you, you know, in a public setting, and talk through this again sometime in the future, as we've figured out how to be five. I think there may be some, you know, habits and practices that become more comfortable that are totally within the realms of KOMA and CORA and KOMA.
Yeah, and to take it to sort of the other end of the spectrum, if, let's say, because we are now five, two of you can talk about stuff. And so if Commissioner A and Commissioner B want to talk about the upcoming resolution or conditional use permit, you can. It might not be the most cautious approach. You know, there are, there's one school of thought that would say it would be better not to talk about an upcoming matter, because you're also not supposed to prejudge, you know, in quasi-judicial matters in particular. And legislative is different, as we've discussed in other contexts, but, or have bias, you know, and so that's another piece. So if, for example, you want to talk about land use policy, or the topic of protecting agricultural land, or you want to talk about how we're going to address unhoused people, or whatever, how we're going to solve a particular problem, there may be a subject matter that you want to talk with another commissioner about, and that's certainly fair game. I mean, that's appropriate. And yet, you may choose that, you know, "I'm only going to talk with Commissioner A about this topic." You know, that could be a practice you would adopt, and you just may say, "Okay, well, I'm Commissioner A, I'm only going to talk with Commissioner B about this issue." Because the concern would be, even if you just have two of you talking, if A talks to B, and then B talks to C, then it starts to feel more like there could be a meeting. Now, it might not be, and it might not meet the criteria, but it's, the more cautious approach might be, if you're going to talk about this topic, you might pick somebody that you're going to talk with about that. Or, and I'm not saying you have to, you could talk with, but it does create the risk that if you routinely are talking to Commissioner A or B, and they're talking to C and D, then it gets a little more fuzzy at that point.
And even that, it seems like it ought to be something that's kind of generally known, just so that you avoid forming cliques, because we've seen this in other bodies, where like two people are always talking about a particular topic together, and then coming back kind of in force and trying to kind of get that idea, you know, pushed out to the five. And yet, if it were like, two people were assigned by this body to, you know, like, tackle a topic, or should go to a meeting or something and talk to each other about that meeting, and then report back, feels different. So I just, I think some of it's just intent, and some of it's just as we form, you know, healthy cultures around what we do and don't talk about with each other.
Yeah, and I'd say, Commissioner, one of the things that, you know, staff's talked about in this sense is, you know, at different times, you know, when we've had big initiatives coming forward, and I'm thinking of like the Open Space Plan and the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, you know, we present opportunities to commissioners, and in the past, it's always been individually, hey, do you want a deeper conversation on this with staff in advance of a meeting? Those things could be done with two commissioners now, because to me, it's very much like we're, you know, we're kind of orienting you to this topic, we're letting you walk through that. So I, but yet, that's not, those are legislative, they're not quasi-judicial. And so I do think those are some things we could do if that's, if the commission's comfortable with that. I don't, you know, I don't think it's wise with a quasi-judicial situation like a land use decision.
Yeah, and that was one of the questions I kind of brought here, is that feels different to me, and I know both fall under the same rules, but legislative things where we're talking kind of big-picture ideas about how the community moves forward seem different than, you know, a quasi-judicial, where we've got an applicant and an item that's coming for a vote. That feels like something I don't really want to talk with another commissioner outside of this space.
Yes, and certainly in that instance. The question would be if you wanted to talk more generally about broad policy issues and that sort of thing. That's, would not meet the requirement that it's intended by all participants to reach an agreement on a matter that requires binding action by the commission. So that if Commissioner A talks to B, and B talks to C, and it's all about a general policy matter, and we got a complaint, and I was defending the complaint, then I would say, "That's not a meeting, and that's not a violation." If you were asking me, you know, "Does it get messy when you're having those conversations, and could it lead to a complaint?" You know, it could, it could, and it's not my job to tell you what you can't do. I mean, I guess I tell you what the rules are, but it's, it might be, again, a more cautious approach to manage those conversations in a way that is less likely to lead to a perception or an actual complaint. But those broad, brush-stroke, policy discussions are absolutely appropriate, certainly among two of you. And I guess I'll add one other thing that I didn't mention, and this is not something that I've ever seen happen, and I don't ever expect to see happen, so I'm mentioning this purely as a theoretical or hypothetical situation, but it's also not appropriate for a staff person to coordinate amongst you. You know, so if I, as county counselor, were to say, "Okay, Commissioner Dorsey, what do you think about this?" And then I go to Commissioner Anderson, and I say, "What do you think about this?" And then I go to Commissioner Kelly, and I say, "Okay, I think you've got two votes." That would be an absolute serial meeting, even though there's been no emails, no text messages, no personal conversation between you. So it's really by any means or method at all that we're trying to facilitate a discussion. So that would, and again, I've never seen county staff try to do that. I'm not saying that happens, I'm just mentioning it as a possibility that we want to try to avoid.
And I think that concept that you've mentioned a couple of times about deciding a vote before you get here is not something that happens or should ever happen with, for commissioners, to, you know, pre-decide a vote before we're here. So in terms of like counting votes beforehand, it shouldn't ever happen, because there shouldn't be anything to count until the full public meeting, hearing from the public, hearing from each other, and then taking an official vote.
John, I just wanted to clarify what you just said, you, or add it on to it a little bit. You mentioned the example of how it wouldn't be appropriate for staff to coordinate a discussion amongst commissioners related to a policy topic or some other business that's going to come before the commission. And so I appreciate that example, but just to cycle back a little bit to earlier discussion, it is appropriate and permissible for staff to coordinate things like schedules, scheduling of who's going to speak at an event, participate in an interview, come to other community meetings that are not necessarily a business meeting or work session, for example. That type of coordination of staff amongst commissioners or between commissioners is permissible, right? It's not specifically because those examples I'm giving, which I realize are not exhaustive, but are not related to business or policy decisions that would come to us in a business meeting, correct?
That's right, and I would add to that, Commissioner, that it's also appropriate for staff to brief commissioners. You know, Commissioner A could receive a briefing, and Commissioner B received the briefing, and Commissioner C received the briefing. It could be the same briefing from staff, and it could all happen, but because you're not interacting about it, it's not a serial meeting. So yes to your question, and also, these briefings that you may get if you have a one-on-one with Sarah or some other staff person, another commissioner could have a similar one-on-one, and that doesn't create a meeting. But to Commissioner Willie's point, then you come into the public sphere where you have your discussion, and you take your action there. All action should be taken in public when it comes down to the time to do that. So I think I've covered serial meetings. Are there other questions? Because I think we're going to talk a little bit about notice and some other things, but are there other questions specifically about your interaction with each other? I think we've covered a lot of that. If not, then I'll just hit some of the high points on public meetings generally. Meetings must be held in locations generally accessible to the public, and this is where we've gotten into doing things by Zoom. Even if you were to have a teleconference, you can do that, provided you provide a means and a method for the people who've requested notice, and the people who are interested in attending to be able to attend. So again, this is not an issue we struggle with. We do our public meetings in a way that's very accessible. Notice of meetings, next slide. We're not required to provide notice generally of our meetings. Now, we do, and I think it's a good practice, and I've never heard anybody wants to stop doing that. We do have to provide notice to people who specifically request it. And so, and the timeframe is such that we don't have to provide a certain number of days' notice, so if you all say, "We want to meet tomorrow," we can do that. It's really more of a policy question. Do you want to drop that on the public that quickly? That's not a legal question, but you certainly can meet on short notice if you need to. Another point I'll just hit very briefly is agendas. You know, we're not required to provide an agenda. If we do, we should include the topics that we intend to discuss. Agendas can be amended during the meeting, they can be amended before the meeting and during the meeting. And, you know, what I have seen in practice is that commissioners typically do not want to slip something in on an agenda that would surprise the public, but if in the course of doing your business, you want to talk about something that's not on the agenda, then that's within your purview to do that. Now, I'll spend a little bit of time on executive session. Is there a question, Commissioner?
Yeah, I think I asked you this when we met earlier, but I've been to some board meetings where they approve the agenda before the meeting starts. Is that a common practice, or part of Robert's Rules of Orders, or, because I notice our agenda is published, we don't actually formally approve it, we just go through it during the meeting.
So I don't purport to be an expert on Robert's Rules. I'm somewhat familiar, I have a copy of it in my office, and I'd be happy to dive deeper. We're not legally required to do any of that, and so it's really more of a practice that we've done it that way. I don't have data, Commissioner, about what other organizations do, but if the commission chair, or if the collective judgment of the commission was that you wanted to follow a more formal procedure around that, it's absolutely within your purview to do that. It's not legally required to do that, so the way that we're doing it is fine, and so, but if there was a desire to do it a different way, that would be okay, too. Did I answer your question? Okay. So I'll say a few words about executive session, and executive sessions is the exception to, we do our business in public. And there are very specific reasons why we must or can have an executive session, and it's important that we have that opportunity to do that, because there are certain things that should not be discussed in public, and there are certain things that would cause harm to the governmental entity if they were. And so there's a statute on this, and we can talk about any number of the exceptions that are involved, but I just included a couple that tend to come. And so there's a statute on this and we can talk about any number of the exceptions that are involved, but I just included a couple that tend to come up. Personnel matters, you know, if you can imagine if you made a motion to go into executive session to discuss the discipline and termination of employee X. You know, that could be really disruptive to that person, particularly if it doesn't come to pass, you know? And so those are some things that we don't necessarily air out publicly. Attorney-client privileged communications, you know, if you're going to seek legal advice or receive a briefing on pending litigation, it's important to protect the privilege that that not be a public discussion. It, it's not appropriate, of course, to make binding decisions in executive session. So to give an example, if there was a lawsuit against the county and someone had made some claims and there was a question about settling that lawsuit, you know, you could meet with your legal counsel in executive session and discuss the relative merits of the case, the defenses, the issues that are going to come up, the likely outcomes, what the plaintiff has requested in the way of settlement. And you could come to a general consensus about what you want to do, but you would have to take whatever action on that with, that you wanted to take in a public meeting. And so you can't say, okay, well, we'll agree to do this and then come out and resume your normal meeting and, and the public doesn't get to hear about it. And so that, that is, that is the way that works. But at the same time, you know, if we're having a privileged conversation in an executive session, then there's no requirement to come out and disclose the contents of that discussion. And the, the client or the, you know, for the purposes of the attorney-client privilege in this instance is the government. It's not Commissioner Reed or Commissioner Kelly or Commissioner Dorsey. It's the government. And so not, not, no single one of you has the power to waive the attorney-client privilege by yourself. So if, you know, Commissioner Willie feels strongly, I'm just picking on you, but you know, we should tell everybody what we just talked about. Well, it would actually require a formal action of the body to waive the attorney-client privilege. And so I just say that not, again, not, never seen this come up, that somebody wants to do that. But I want, I want to make sure it's clear that the organization owns the attorney-client privilege. And so if someone on the board wanted to bring things into the public light, we'd have to deal with that as an item of business. And, and so as I've, I think I've mentioned to each of you during our other sessions, it's not appropriate to take attorney-client privileged matters and then share them with friends, spouse, partner, you know, bowling friends or whatever you do. You know, it's, it's, it's important to maintain that within our, within our confidence. Another example, preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property. Of course, if you were going to acquire real property, you come to the public meeting and vote on it. And there's a number of other exceptions that could come into play, you know, if, if we were talking about HIPAA-protected health information related to the health plan. There's a long list and we can talk about any of the exceptions that you like, but that, that's the gist of what we, we talk about in executive session. The motion for executive session and-
John, can I ask a question about that? It's adjacent to it. There are times when an economic development project may come up and we may be asked to visit with a, a potential business entity. And we will be asked to sign a non-disclosure for protecting their, either intellectual property rights or whatever that is they're sharing with us. Do you have any advice on that as related to, you know, it isn't a meeting of the body, that's for sure. But it does relate to information that we are given as elected officials and being asked not to communicate trade secrets or things like that.
Yeah, and I'm just looking at the statute, Commissioner. There is an exception for an executive session to discuss data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts and individual proprietorships. I'd have to look at the circumstances of a non-disclosure agreement to make sure that it isn't a violation of Cora. Because, and I, and the Cora statute has like 55 exceptions. So I imagine there's one that would allow us to enter into an agreement like that. Again, I'd need to know more about the parameters of that, but generally there are provisions that allow us to do things like that. And so I, I remember that, for instance, under Cora, that certain architectural plans that are created by individuals, you know, whether it's for a, a private project or a public project at a certain points in time are not subject to Cora. You know, at other times they would be, but generally speaking, if there's, again, trade secrets are being shared and, and it falls within this exception that I just mentioned. Or another exception that, that we can find in the statute. And again, I'm not taking the time now to read all 15 of these, but my, my practice typically is when I get a question like this is I pull out statute. I look at all 55 or all 16 exceptions and see if one pertains. And, and with the executive session, oftentimes we are, we are, you know, it's, it, it can be discretionary. But if you were to choose not to protect the confidentiality of those parties, then they may not be coming back to you for any future development projects. So the short answer, I think, to your question is that yes, there are oftentimes ways to avoid having to disclose that publicly until the time comes that it's appropriate to do so.
And there may be something for the commission to discuss about those, to say that we had a discussion about, in our general miscellaneous, we had a discussion about a development project. Here was the discussion without giving those specific details that we can't disclose. But that might be something for us to discuss about how we want to move forward if we have those meetings to share that we had the meeting. I, because many times, these are few and far between. I don't want to pretend that these are happening all the time. This is, I think in my six years, it happened once. But, but I, I do want to make sure that we're, we're, you know, that we are looking at economic development opportunities. And sometimes those economic development opportunities, think Panasonic is a good example of when it was done on a large scale, that there were non-disclosure agreements on who could talk about what the project was. Because it was about land acquisition and, and other things, yes.
Well, and that's a really, and I'm sorry, did any of the other commissioners want to comment? I didn't mean to jump in.
If I could, John, I, I guess I also want to say, you know, this is a new world, not only for us, but for folks that work with you all. And I would say in some of those situations, that's where staff can come in, can come into play. Things can be, this, you're only one commissioner. So then I sometimes worry if outside entities are trying to get the opinion of a commissioner or two, because you still have to come here and work as a body. So I do think sometimes, you know, we've got to figure out what's appropriate for staff and what's appropriate for commissioners.
And, and yes, Commissioner, sorry.
Just saying, I think, I think that's been the key role of, of staff, which it's been easy to do with three because we are only checking in through staff. But to make sure that entities or organizations aren't kind of having those serial conversations without us knowing about it. And I think that's, it's just, I think we're educating ourselves. We're also educating the community about what is permissible and what's not.
Right. And so if you're approached by a developer or a constituent who expresses an opinion and then that same person goes to another commissioner and expresses that opinion, and then goes to a third commissioner and expresses that opinion, that does not create a meeting. But if the person says, Commissioner Kelly, what do you think about this? And then Commissioner Dorsey, what do you think? Well, Commissioner Kelly said such and such, then you have to say, wait a minute, you know, I, I don't, we can't have that conversation. Because now that person is trying to facilitate an interactive discussion. So that's a great point. And, and, and to Commissioner Kelly's comment, I know it, it sort of invites this segue to the motion. Because the, the motion, for example, if you were going into executive session to discuss materials that would be protected by trade secrets or proprietary information, then your motion would indicate such. You know, we are, we are meeting to discuss an economic development project. And the, the reason we're meeting in executive session is because information that constitutes trade secrets and is, is, you know, to protect the confidentiality and secrecy of those materials will return to this room at such and such a time. You know, and that would then inform the public that this is what we're doing. You're transparent about that. There's a justification for it. It's clearly protected by the statute. And that, and yet the conversation occurs in private. Now, again, not to reiterate unduly, but when it's time to make a decision on that, you come back into the public session and you disclose the materials that need to be disclosed and you make the discussion and vote on, on the record. So, and this is what I typically do when I'm preparing an, an executive session motion for you. I'm attentive to these requirements, which is the subject to be discussed and the justification, which is one of these statutory requirements. And the time and place the open meeting will resume. The challenge in describing the subject is to be descriptive enough that it communicates to the public that, you know, what we're doing, but not so descriptive that it obviates the whole point of having an executive session. So to go into executive discussion to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel, to protect the privacy of the individuals involved, is sufficient to communicate to the public what we're doing. To say, we're going into executive session to discuss the discipline and potential termination of the director of X department is too much. It would be more transparent, but it's also not necessary. On the other hand, saying we're going into executive session to discuss secret stuff is not going to be enough to meet the requirements of the statute. I'm being a little bit silly, but the requirements of the motion are somewhat technical. And then it's really the only thing that law requires that we record in minutes. I have another slide on minutes, but we have to record the motion in the minutes.
And we do occasionally get pushed back from the, from the public that wants more than what is in the motion. But, you know, you do write those for us so that they comply with the statutes and such. But that's just something that we hear from folks that, that, you know, this is a, this transparency part and yet privacy, especially over like personnel matters, that's just a hard thing, I think, for the public sometimes to, to accept.
And I'll say that as commissioners receive that feedback, if there's a desire to provide more information about that, we can talk about it. There are times when I would caution against it for particular reasons. And there are some instances where I, where we're prohibited by law from sharing certain matters publicly. But, you know, I really do, and when I'm writing the motions, I try to be as disclosing as possible under the circumstances. Because again, our policy and our intent is to go, is to do our business in public, except to the very limited extent we can't. Or, or can't, or, or decide that we can't at a particular point in time. So, you know, you'll hear when you read these motions that we're talking about when we're going to resume the meeting, where we're going to resume the meeting. It's not appropriate to go have an executive session three days from now. I mean, it's during a noticed meeting. You recess that meeting. You can go to another room and come back. But it, the public has a right to then be there when you come back, if they want to. Sometimes they don't stick around, but if they do, then they get to see when you come out. And if there were to be action taken, then that's when it could be taken or it could be taken later. But the executive session is part of a noticed meeting. It's not something that happens separately. Now, we could notice a meeting specifically to have an executive session. Like let's say, you know, two weeks from Thursday, we're going to meet at 1:00 PM and here's our agenda, executive session. Well, that's legit, but we can't just have an executive session on the fly. And we can't, you know, we can't just have one spontaneously because three or four commissioners decide to do that. You know, it requires the formal motion in the, in the meeting. Are there any other questions about executive session before we move on?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to add a comment that for new commissioners in particular, part of that practice of being so specific about time and noticing it is that if we initially recess for 20 minutes, but at minute 19, we all decide in the room that we need a little bit more time, we pause that conversation so that the chair can come back to the public meeting, to the public room, and provide an update and extend that executive session for whatever amount of time we've agreed on. And sometimes that happens two or three times, depending on how a discussion is going. I just wanted to illustrate that part of the process, also for any public who's interested in how that, why it happens that way sometimes.
And the reason of not going longer and saying the executive session is going to take two hours is because you can't come back any sooner than that. So if, so we tend to err on the side of too little time to discuss something. Because if you said it, the executive session was going to take two hours, you cannot come back earlier than two hours.
Because somebody from the public might leave and go do something else and they come back, wait, you had a meeting? I wasn't here. You know, so, and there's always this moment, you know, often this moment in the meeting where, you know, the chair reads the motions, well, how long do you think we need? You know, we try to guess how long it's going to take and we do tend to err on the side of shorter, knowing we can extend. And I'll say that, you know, particularly with respect to the attorney-client privileged matters, you know, they, if, if you, and this is slightly different from executive session, but the conversation made me think of this, which is that when we're in a meeting, and I don't attend all of your meetings, Sarah doesn't ask me to, but i, if we're in a meeting and a commissioner asks me for a legal opinion, and I provide that opinion in the meeting, then it's not privileged. And I, if I had something to say that was sensitive or, you know, are we going to win this lawsuit, John? Well, you don't want to ask me that in a public meeting because if I answer the question, it might undermine our defense to the lawsuit or, you know, whatever. And so it, it's, it's up to you to decide what to ask your counsel during an open meeting. But bear in mind that there may be topics that are better discussed in executive session if they involve sensitive legal matters. You know, I, I do field questions in executive, or in open session routinely, and I try to use my own judgment, whether it's the kind of thing that is, seems appropriate to discuss in a public meeting. Or I might say, well, Commissioner, if it's okay with you, I'd suggest we recess to executive session and have that conversation. Just, again, not to keep secrets from the public, except sometimes we have to do things privately, provided it's within one of these very narrow exceptions. And again, we don't play fast and loose with this. We tend to be very conservative about how we do it. But again, if you ask me or another lawyer who's representing the county a question in open session, then it does create the possibility of, of that not being privileged. And then it could, you know, lead to further questions and that sort of thing. So we're, we're cautious about that. Other questions about executive session? Okay, you know, just coma does not require formal or specific meeting procedures, notice, you know, public comment. And this commission allows public comment and, you know, I certainly have no quarrel with that. It's, it's just a statement of the law that it's not required to be allowed. You're not required to keep minutes, although we do. Executive sessions must be recorded in minutes, however, that's the one exception.
Can I ask a question about public comment? My understanding is general public comment is not required by law, but public comment on an item we're coming to vote on would be, or is that not the case?
The, the, in a legislative, okay, so I know we all know this, but I'm going to say this for purposes of our conversation. There are legislative matters and quasi judicial matters that the commission attends to. A legislative matter might be an amendment of the code or an adoption of a policy. You know, we're going to allow vacation rentals or we're not, you know, that's a legislative matter. Are we going to allow this particular vacation rental or this particular quarry? That is a quasi judicial matter. And so in a quasi judicial matter, there are requirements of due process that attach. In which case the applicant is entitled to hear any evidence that the board is considering with respect to that matter and respond. That's not the same thing as the public being allowed to respond or comment. There may be statutory provisions that pertain for things like protest petitions and other ways that the public can participate. It's always been our practice that the public comments on matters that are, you know, quasi judicial type matters and even legislative matters. But the law does not, apart from the requirements of due process, the law does not require that the public be allowed to comment on legislative or quasi judicial matters. And, and again, unless there's a specific statute that we would need to refer to in a particular instance. But again, it's always been the practice of the commission in my experience that the public does participate in that. And I've never heard anyone say that we want to stop doing that. It's just legally, it's a, it's a more of a privilege than a right and it's up to the body to decide what parameters will be put on that. Okay, so that was really my overview on coma. I think we've had, if there are other questions that arise later, Commissioner Willie?
Is that, is this a time to ask, to have you clarify practices around ex parte communications?
I'd be happy to, sure. The, the purpose of disclosing, okay, so first of all, ex parte communications are communications that a commissioner receives outside the formal meeting. So it could be an email. It could be a conversation at, you know, the, you know, at the baseball game. It could be anything like that. The, there is no legal requirement per se that ex parte communications must be disclosed. However, as I mentioned a minute ago, the applicant or the proponent of a particular quasi judicial matter, again, not a legislative matter, but a quasi judicial matter, is entitled to know the evidence that the commission is considering in deciding the, the issue. So I'll make up an example. If a quarry operator is applying for a permit to operate a quarry and Commissioner A is approached by a citizen who says, I'm really worried about the dynamite blasting and it's going to create all these issues and it's going to destroy the foundation of my house, et cetera, et cetera. And then Commissioner A comes to the meeting and sits quietly and says nothing about that and then votes against the permit or persuades other commissioners to vote against the permit without disclosing that, then the applicant had no opportunity to respond. And maybe the applicant would come in- And maybe the applicant would come in and say, well, no, I have an engineer, and he says this and that, and, and the commission can decide what to do with that information. I mean, I've seen instances where in, one engineer says X, and another engineer says not X, and the commission gets to decide who to believe and what to rely on, but the purpose of that ex parte, so then this example that I made up, is that commissioner would want to come in and say, I would like to disclose that I received a communication about dynamiting and blasting and concern about foundation damage. Okay? Then the applicant would have a fair opportunity in the due process of the hearing to respond, to present evidence, et cetera, et cetera. It would not be required to say, Citizen John Doe told me at 4:00 on Tuesday at the, you know, feed store, that such and such was his opinion. It would be enough to disclose to the applicant that, the, the general gist of the information that the commissioner received, and for that person opportunity to respond. Some, some commissioners, you know, and I, I've certainly, the city, there's a more robust, you know, you might say, practice of making routine disclosures of every ex parte communication about a lot of different things. We don't typically do that, at least in my experience, but there's nothing prohibiting that. It's just a matter of, you know, when it's required is in that quasi-judicial context, and, and, and that's why. It's, it's, and so in the, typically in our packets, you know, if you've received emails or copies of studies or articles that have been forwarded to you, those will be appended to the packet, so that the public has an ability to see what those things are. And in my experience, watching lots and lots of hearings over the years, usually all the issues come out, whether it's through staff reporting that, you know, these, you know, members of the public raised this concern, and the applicant responded this way, and the planning commission did this, you know, so a lot of this stuff does get aired out, even without the ex parte disclosures, but tho, those are the procedures that, you know, would be legally required with respect to that. Did I answer your question? Other questions about open meetings? Okay, we'll spend just a little bit of time on, I don't have my watch, Sarah, are we doing okay?
Yeah, I was going to give you-
Yeah, I'm, you know, I, I, and we are not going to, again, read all these slides. Really, the, a lot of what happens with open records happens at the staff level, and doesn't require direct involvement by the commissioners, so this is just more informational. It, it, and we, again, adhere to the public policy of Kansas, that our records should be presumed open, that the, we're doing the people's business, and the, this information belongs to them. The, the CORA does not require us to create records, so when people write in and say, I'd like to know all the this and that, well, we're not required to go research that and prepare a summary and provide the data that they're asking for. Sometimes we do, you know, it really depends on the recipient of the request, you know, you might have a request come into a particular department, and they're more than happy to help the citizen understand the information that's available, but CORA, Kansas Open Records Act, does not require us to go create records to provide to the public to summarize the data or information that we have. Public records can really include anything, and I know you've all heard a version of this discussion from me in the past, but it really could be a text, it could be a document, it could be a memo, it could be a data that resides on a server, that, you know, really the, the type of information that could be subject to request is pretty, pretty vast. And what we typically do, you know, I've got lots of definitions and things in here, there are exceptions to that, that, that apply, and so what we typically do when we get a request is we look at what the request is asking for. Sometimes the request has been phrased in such a way that it would create a response that would include hundreds of thousands of things, and so our practice in that case would be to go back to the requester and say, you know, let's work this out. What, what is it that you really want? And, you know, could we run some searches through our emails or databases? You know, I want every email to and from the county commission for the last five years. Well, that's going to be really burdensome for us and for them, but if we say, is there a particular topic that you're looking for? Are there particular recipients that you want us to look for? And so we do work with the public very cooperatively to try to help them get what they really want. Now, if that search pops up things like someone's protected HIPAA information, or information that's attorney-client privileged, or if it's a proprietary trade secret, or something that we can't disclose by law, or that we are not required to disclose by law, then we will, you know, retain that information back. But generally speaking, we produce, you know, and we field these requests all the time. And again, there are 55, some exceptions in the statute, and I won't purport to go over all of those, but one thing I want to emphasize for the commission is that these records can live anywhere. I mean, they can live on your cell phone, they can live on your tablet, they can live in your file cabinet at home, they certainly live on the server here at Douglas County. And so, you know, oftentimes commissioners will choose to use their official email account for county business, because when we get an Open Records Act request for all emails to and from Commissioner Anderson, well, we're going to go ask Commissioner Anderson, you know, and if she has a Gmail account, or a whatever, then we're going to have to look there, too, but if Commissioner Anderson says, I never use my Gmail account for any county business, then, you know, we would probably ask a few follow-up questions to make sure that we have a common understanding of what the request requires, but that's a, that keeps you from having to then search multiple, lots of different locations for stuff. So again, think expansively as far as where public records can live. You know, I've got slides in here about what's a public agency and who's not, we can talk about that if you want. The CORA requires us to appoint a Freedom of Information Officer, we've done that. We make available to the public the process for requesting public records. We, we have a form, but we don't require that the form be used. We like that the form be used, because it helps us be more efficient in our response, but we're not standing on a lot of formal technicalities. Any person can make a request, that person could be local, they could be from somewhere else, they don't have to say why. Again, as I mentioned, the form of the request, you know, we're not, we, we do ask for some things, including that the, the Requestor won't use the information to solicit sales or services, we're not trying to create prospecting databases for marketing companies on, on that, but on the other hand, the fact that it might involve hundreds of documents is not a, you know, it just, it just means we have to work harder to respond to the request. Rights of the Requester are summarized in this slide. There are some limitations here that I've noted, and as I mentioned earlier, there are something like 55 exceptions to the Open Records Act, you know, in statute, so every time we get a request, we look to see if there are any restrictions or prohibitions on our being able to provide that. When we withhold any information, we disclose that to the Requester, we don't secretly hold things back, you know, we always say, we are providing this, and we're not providing that, and if we're not providing something, we cite the statutory provision for why we're not providing it, so that we're not hiding the ball, we're transparent about that. We are allowed to recover fees and charges for the work. The, the case law from the courts say that we're allowed to recover our actual expenses. In dialogue with the Attorney General's office, they have a, a different interpretation of that, so we follow the Attorney General's guidance, and so we actually recover less than we actually spend to respond to public record act requests, a, and that's a policy decision that we've made, even though I think legally we could defend charging, we don't. There are some records that must be mandatorily closed, and, you know, for example, private healthcare information would be one, if someone said, I'd like the, you know, prescription records for employees such and such under your health plan, well, we're not going to turn that over. As I've mentioned, there are a number of exemptions, I've summarized some of the more common ones in the exemptions. One that I've highlighted here on its own slide is notes, preliminary drafts, research data, and this, the purpose of this exemption is that, let's say you have staff members who are actively discussing a policy matter, and, you know, staff member A says, I really think we should do this, and staff member says, I completely disagree, that's a terrible idea, and staff member A says, but wait, think about it this way. That deliberative process should be allowed to occur, and it's not that we're trying to hide it from the public, but it's that people are, should be able to air out different opinions and ideas. When it comes to you all, and you have your public discussion, that's where the public gets to see the business being done, and, and, again, we, we apply these exceptions in a case-by-case basis, and we look at each thing to see if it meets the, the requirement. You know, we have some others noted here, you know, safety and security, if someone I'd like to, says, I'd like to know all the security measures at the county correctional facility, well, we're not going to be able to provide that. Redaction, if we have a record that, you know, has some matters that are protected and some matters that are not, we will light out or, you know, hide the information that's subject to non-disclosure, but then provide the rest, that's all this slide is attempting to summarize. I'm going to recap CORA, but I've gone through this very quickly. Are there specific questions about CORA? I realize this doesn't involve you as much on a day-to-day basis, but I'm happy to go down any particular rabbit hole that you might want. Okay, so recap, you know, CORA requires the county to provide public access. Records subject to CORA can include electronic materials, there are detailed rules for how we respond. Recap on coma. The commission is subject to coma, a meeting is a gathering of the majority of the body, engaging in an interactive discussion, where there's an intent to discuss the business or affairs of the body. We've talked about executive session and the need to be careful to avoid an inadvertent meeting, whether a serial meeting or otherwise. So that's really my materials, and I'm happy to spend as much time, as Sarah says I have, or you obviously I have, to respond to further questions.
Well, thank you. And commissioners, we usually do try and hold to write about an hour for our work sessions, but this is also an important topic, and if there are questions that, you know, you want to ask now, I certainly would be willing to make time for that. So commissioners, do you have other things you'd like to ask John while we've got him? John, thank you so much for being here, and of course, any commissioner can circle back with you if there are additional questions, I imagine.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, and just to reiterate, we, we don't take public comment during our work session, we also don't make any decisions or take any votes, however, we do recess after this to our 5:30 business meeting, where we do take a public comment. So with that, we are recessed until 5:30, thank you all.